I'll wait for it to show me. There we go. Good evening and welcome to the November 17th, 2022 meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. I am Chair Noah Levy, presiding tonight. Before we get started, I want to let you know about the ways that you can follow along or join the meeting remotely. We have several different ways, but they're a little bit more complicated right now because, unfortunately, the county website is down. But you can tune in to watch this meeting on Access Humboldt on cable channel 11. And if you do that, what, 10? I'm so sorry. It says 11 on the agenda. We should fix that. Channel 10, excuse me. You can also join the meeting, although the website is down, the humboldt-ledgestar.com website is up. That will allow you to access documents for the meeting and watch a live stream of the meeting. If you do join by either of those methods, you can then get a copy of the agenda, and the agenda shows the Zoom link. And if you get that Zoom link for this meeting from the top of the agenda, that's actually the best way to participate by computer, because then you'll be following us in real time, can raise your hand through Zoom, and be recognized and speak if you would like to. You can also, as usual, call in via telephone. The number is on the agenda, but I'll just read it. 364, sorry, 346-248-7799, and enter the meeting, 875-4480-7065. Password 200525. Anyway, with all that being said, I will invite you to join me for a salute to the flag.
My president, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trip, could we please get a roll call of Commissioners present?
Alan Bonjio. Noah Levy.
Present.
Brian Mitchell. Mike Newman.
Present.
Melanie McAver.
Here.
Peggy O'Neil.
Here.
And Thomas Mulder.
Here.
Okay, we have five Commissioners at present that make the quorum. Moving then to item C, Agenda Modifications. Director Ford, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
We have no modifications to the agenda, Chair. We do have a supplemental which have to do with the Cisco Farms application, item G1. There are, I believe, four letters or communications that are included in that.
Okay, thanks so much. Moving then to item D, that would be public comments. This is the time for anyone to comment on a matter that is not on our agenda tonight. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to make such a comment? Seeing none. I will ask if we have any participants in Zoom who would like to make a comment. And I do see a couple of hands up. So I will recognize the first caller on Zoom, Public 5288. Speaker, you are unmuted.
Chair Noah Levy, can you hear me? This is Kent Swatzky.
Yes, we can. Hello, Kent.
Well, great. I'm back from Mexico after two months. And there's been something on my mind that, that I think that the, now that we're kind of done with a whole bunch of meetings on the cannabis issue, it sounds like, I think it's time to get back to some business that's totally unfinished and not even near being complete. That's your general plan. And the general plan contained a few different components, and one of the final components of that was the zoning. So we have a whole bunch of things out there still that are zoned incorrectly. We have a whole bunch of people who are wondering, I project my parcel with general plan designated a certain thing, but do I get to develop that with one parcel per acre or one parcel per five acres? Well, we're all left in limbo. There's some of them that are even unclassified that are not aligned correctly with what the general plan designation is. It's way, way, way past time that the Planning Commission or the Planning Department finished its work on the general plan. I think you're going to find, if I recall right, there were many different projects, many different deliverables that had a one-year, two-year time period. The general plan was out of date when it was put in, but it's still not put in. It's not finished. The work's not done. Hate to have to let you know, but, you know, the process should be now where people can, are, they're told what their general plan designation is, and the people have input as far as what they would like to have it zoned. And these took many, many meetings to get the general plan designations done, but now the rubber hits the road. And so I really wish we would do that. I have parcels out in Blue Lake, and at one time, there was Annie and Mary Railroad. There was a Q-zone that was proposed to be put upon my parcel. It's since been determined that that's been abandoned. There's no way that it can be railbanked, trailbanked, or anything. It's done. And yet, I still have this crowd over my parcel as far as a potential Q-zone that would force me to go ahead and not be doing any structures or any kind of commitments. Some of these people have very large things going across the parcel. It's time that we finish this up and got past the other work we've been doing. That's my request tonight, is that you ask to have agendas when you will begin to finish the general plan that should have been done five or seven years ago, in my opinion, and many others. Thank you, Mark. Can you speak this evening?
Thank you so much for that comment, Kent. Moving on to the other Zoom caller with hand raised, that is Public 7429. I'd like to recognize you. You are unmuted.
Hi, good evening. This is Robi Tenorio, and I just, I just want to mention that it was really wonderful to get some rain, a huge relief to move out of fire season, but we've, we've not moved out of a drought, and we can continue to expect dramatic climate change impacts. And so we need to be really very careful with impacts on the health, possible impacts on the health of our watersheds and our water. And rain definitely brought up the river and the creek a bit, but now it's, it's dry, and the creek is not meeting the river. So fortunately, we're still in a drought, and we need to be very, very careful and think of the future with our water. Okay, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Robi. I don't see any other hands. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on a matter not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Josh, were you just saying you can't hear me? Or?
My feet is kind of bad, but Access Humboldt is okay. So I'm kind of checking to see if maybe I'm.
Okay. I don't want to make it too loud, but I'll try to keep close to the mic. Okay, then moving along to the, to item E, that's the consent agenda. These are matters that are routine in nature and usually approved by a single vote, but I'm going to go through the items on consent to make sure, to see if anyone in the audience or on the commission would like to pull one of them for discussion. The first consent item is review and approval of the October 20th, 2022 action summary. Anyone wish to comment on that? Okay, we'll leave that on consent. Item two is review and approval of November 3rd, 2022 action summary. Anyone want to discuss that? Seeing none, we'll leave that on consent. But I will just mention that I really appreciated the way you added some notes at the end of that action summary on the discussion items. You had a little notation about the individual comments made by Commissioners, really helpful. So thank you for that formatting innovation. The third item on consent is the Gekmuller Coastal Development Permit. It's actually, it's, the only action is going to be to continue this to the December 1st, 2022 meeting, but I still want to see if anyone in the audience who are on Zoom wishes to comment on it. Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. The fourth item is the Jesperellas Conditional Use Permit in the Fortuna area. Is there anyone wishing to pull that for discussion or make a comment? Nope. Okay, we will leave that on consent. The last consent item is number five, Sandpoint Subdivision Coastal Development Permit Extension in the McKinleyville area. Is there anyone wishing to comment on that or pull that for discussion?
A hand up.
Oh, we do have a hand on that one, so I will pull that item off the consent calendar, and we will get to that afterwards. Okay, so what remains on consent are items one, two, three, and four.
I'll make a motion to approve items one through four on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Trip, can we have a roll call vote on that motion?
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
And Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item F, items pulled from consents, and that would be simply this last consent, this last item from the consent calendar, which is the Sandpoint Subdivision Coastal Development Permit Extension. We had a Zoom attendee raise their hand for that one. 7454, I believe that is Mr. Swatzky. Kent, would you like to make a comment, ask a question about it?
Noah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thanks, Kent.
When you went through the consent items, what was going through the telephones was so garbled, I couldn't even tell. I tried to pull both four and five, and if you're, if you're relying upon communication by the phone system, you need to allow for a lag, because I had to go back to the telephone on that. So I did, I did have some questions on, on the Sandpoint. I had some major comments also on the other one there, but I guess that's passed. Is this, and I tried to get a hold of John Ford a few times to try and answer these questions before the meeting, so I wouldn't pull it. But is this Sandpoint subdivision, is it totally, all the requirements, the roads are in, the sidewalks are in, everything's in on this thing? I'm just curious, how many permit extensions are given on something? You know, it's going on for, what, 28 years or something after the original approval? And at what time is the compliance of that subdivision reassessed as far as current conditions? So I do have some questions and concerns on how this works and why, I guess just because it's in the coastal zone, you have to redo this every seven years or something? It doesn't make too much sense to me. It's either a good permit or it's not. And so maybe this is just bookkeeping? That's where my question for John Ford that I didn't get answered, that I'm trying to get answered now.
Okay, thank you, Kent. And I do apologize that, that the mic was not picking up my voice clearly. I will go slower in future. You'll forgive me. I'm new at this, but I'm, I'm getting the hang of it and happy to take feedback. As for your questions, I'm happy to ask Director Ford if he has, if he would like to make a response, or we could have a staff report on this item.
I can give a brief response.
Okay.
I think Mr. Swatzky was correct, is correct. This subdivision really has been built out. It just has the lots that are there now, since it is in the coastal zone. The coastal development permit is really what's being extended to allow the ability to place houses on the lot and construct them. Otherwise, this development has really been effectuated. The map is done. The lots are created. The streets are there.
Mr. Mulder, do you have a question? No, oh.
Is your computer on? You might be getting feedback from your computer.
It is, it is muted. Yeah, I, I.
Does it sound good? Does the sound go on here?
No. Oh, yes. Yes, this, no, it's, it's muted. I just turned it back. Oops, sorry.
Does that sound good? Kent's.
It's.
Yeah, that's what we're hearing. I mean, that's better. You're sounding better than anyone.
Yeah, I'm sounding better now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just turned the volume on my computer for a moment, but I turned it back off. If that's good, that's good if I'm sounding a little bit more clear.
Try Thomas's mic.
Sure, we can try that for a moment. Is this any clearer? That is clear. Okay, yeah, we'll share a microphone. Sure, no problem. No problem there. All right. Sorry, everyone, for the, for the technical glitches, but I think then, with that, with the director's comments on the, or answers to Mr. Swatzky's questions, is there any other discussion of this item from the Commissioners, or would we wish to have a staff report on it before considering it for a vote? Yeah, Commissioner Newman?
I just wanted to add, one of the things that Kent was asking, too, was it appears, according to the staff report on the executive summary right here, that 16 of the lots have been developed and 21 are currently vacant. So it's almost 50%. It's a good 40% already developed, so that was one of his questions there. And I just wanted to point that out for the audience, that it is developed.
Right, halfway.
Halfway.
Right. Okay, no, thank you for that clarification. Anyone else? If not, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll soon.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I, I didn't, didn't close public comment, or? Yeah, thank you so much. I guess I opened public comment. We had Mr. Swatzky's comment. I will close public comments. Just want to make sure there's nobody else in the audience wishing to comment on this item. Okay, thank you. Then I will close public comments and bring it back to the Commission. Oh.
I make a motion to approve this Sandpoint Subdivision Coastal Development Permit Extension.
Now, I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. And Commissioner Mulder, if I do see you raise your hand, I'll just switch the mic over to you real quick. We'll get this down. Just watch us. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Trip, could we please get a roll call vote on this item?
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
And Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, motion carries five to zero.
Can you try turning off the ones to your right?
This one? It's off.
Okay.
This one's off. This one is on. Is that coming through okay?
It's hit or miss.
It's hit or miss. Okay. Apologies, folks.
Everyone else is coming through very clearly. You're coming through clearly on Access Humboldt and out on Sam.
That's so weird. I'll, I'll speak slowly and deliberately.
I think it's cross-rigged.
Okay. That brings us to public hearings, item G. The first under, the first and only item tonight under public hearings is Cisco Farms Incorporated in the Petrolia area. Could we? You're right, I'm sorry. The first item under public hearings is the Cisco Farms item, Cisco Farms project in the Petrolia area. I would just like to open this up for the public to, do we have any members of the public, either in person or on Zoom, who would like to comment? Sorry, okay, forgive me. We will, before we get to public comment, forgive me, sir, I would invite a staff report on this item.
And the public hearing has been opened.
I'm going to close public hearing for the moment. I will reopen it after the staff report. I just meant closing public comment, but I, but the public hearing on this item has begun, and we will begin with a staff report, please.
Good evening. My name is Michael Holtermann. I'm the assigned planner for Cisco Farms. That's application 17384 on APNs 105, 101, 011, 104, 232, 005, and 104, 191, 001. So here you can see the three APNs. They do comprise one legal parcel. Also, you can see kind of the location in relation to Petrolia, and there, kind of in the center of the screen is Chambers Road, which is where the site is accessed. Just kind of a brief overview of cultivation, processing activities, just the project in general. Cultivation is proposed to be three acres of full sun outdoor, one acre of cultivation in light-deep greenhouses, an additional acre of mixed-light cultivation, and 67,000, almost 68,000 square feet of commercial nursery space. Processing activities include 19,000 square feet of drying space, a 3,000-square-foot processing building, 1,280 square feet of employee housing, and the applicant expects approximately 34 employees on site at peak operations. The water source for the project is proposed to be a rainwater catchment pond, approximately 2.65 million gallons, as well as 190,000 gallons in storage tanks. Water use is projected at 2.265 million gallons annually, and that is 2.154 million gallons for irrigation, and then 111, almost 112,000 for processing and employee use. So one thing to touch on with the water storage and use, there are two conditions that are applicable to this that I would like to bring some attention to. That would be conditions A4 and A5. Condition A4 requires that the applicant either evaluate, or not that the applicant evaluate, rather, but that they have a geologist or hydrogeologist evaluate the proposed well. Prior to use, the evaluation must demonstrate that no negative impacts on groundwater resources and surface water disconnection. Yeah, sorry. The second option would be to install additional water storage and rainwater catchment infrastructure in order to meet the total storage requirements for the project. And then condition A5 kind of gets a little more specific in that if the applicant is unable to use the groundwater well, they not only need to obtain and install the additional rainwater catchment storage infrastructure, but they also need to install a potable rainwater catchment system for employee use, subject to approval from the Department of Environmental Health. The energy source is a proposed solar array. The applicant already has 200, 200 amp service on site. They were proposing to upgrade that service to 600 amps, however, given light of the issues with PG&E supplying power to cannabis projects, as well as just generally across the county. The applicant is proposing to kind of essentially hold off on the fifth phase of development until PG&E power is ready, or alternatively, just go full solar. So one other condition to point out with regard to energy use would be condition A11, which specifies that prior to the issuance of building permits or initiation of activities requiring the use of electricity, for each of the phases, the applicant will be responsible for providing documentation that demonstrates adequate electricity is available to the satisfaction of the planning director. Here we have a site map. It's a little bit busy, so I'm just going to try and hit the key points. You can see the pond. There's three acres of outdoor cultivation. The cross-hatched areas are commercial nursery space, and the rest, most of it is light deprivation greenhouses, but you see there is like a checkered or kind of crossed area adjacent to the pond. That is both one acre of mixed-light cultivation and additional commercial nursery space that are in the same gutter-connected greenhouse area. So just some things that I wanted to touch on as well in regard to the ISMND. First, just to highlight the mitigation measures that are included in the ISMND, those include dust control, pre-construction American Badger surveys, nesting bird surveys, inadvertent discovery protocol, and appropriate scaling of power supply, and that was to address issues with air quality, biological resources, energy, cultural resources, and geology and The second thing on the screen there is some general public concerns that we received during the circulation period for the ISMND. There were more than this. They are in the resolution of the staff report. If you wanted to look at some of the other ones, I just kind of pulled out some of the major concerns, that there was kind of a pattern of having repeated concerns about these issues, and I wanted to address those directly. So those three major concerns are fire safety, traffic, and water use. As far as fire safety, the applicant has produced a will-serv letter from the Petrolia Volunteer Fire Protection District. Referral, sorry, the project was sent to referrals to CAL FIRE and the Petrolia Volunteer Fire Protection District. No comment was received from CAL FIRE, and the Petrolia Volunteer Fire Protection District recommended 2,500 gallons of water dedicated to fire suppression. The applicant is currently proposing 10,000 gallons. The applicant also supplied alternate ingress/egress emergency access. That's also included as an attachment. Some of these concerns are both for fire and traffic, so I'm just going to kind of use these next two as a way to transition into traffic. One of those being there is a one-lane bridge on Chambers Road that is used to access the There is an engineer report that has been attached to the staff report, where the engineer does identify that the one-lane bridge, while a pinch point, does have good visibility on both sides and turnouts, and I also included a few photographs in the next slide to kind of display that. There are additional photographs and additional information in the engineer report. The engineer report also took a look at the estimated average daily trips for the project. They estimated 202 trips per day on the road prior to operations. That includes other cannabis projects. The engineer pulled information from cultivation operations plan from other projects that are proposed or included on the road. I think there's one that was, I'm sorry, one that was proposed. The application been submitted, and I think the other three were in postapproval monitoring. As well as the Humboldt County Design Standards for roadway category, so that's where we get the 202 trips kind of baseline. The expected increase on the report does say 68 daily trips. That's 34 employees round trip per day, but I did call the agent, and it should, should be 69 trips per day. The processing and commercial nursery, the applicant expected approximately 36 trips per month for that, which comes out to a little over one trip per day. Obviously, it doesn't kind of work out that way, but just as an average, that was helpful to add in there. The report found that the daily trips were still within the 400 ADT that defines a very low-volume road, and therefore concluded that the road was appropriate to serve the needs of the project and was safe for the anticipated amount of traffic. and was safe for the anticipated amount of traffic. Lastly, is water use. The surface water, or excuse me, the rainwater detention is less than 1% of the precipitation that would fall in the parcel. Rainwater catchment appears appropriate for the proposed use even in multiple consecutive drought years. The next few slides after the photographs of the bridge go over the rainwater catchment calculations. So we'll kind of walk through that in a minute. And the applicant has been conditioned to obtain additional water storage or provide an evaluation of the groundwater well to determine its impact on groundwater resources and surface water connectivity. So the next slide here, we have photographs. The left is facing west, the right is facing east. It's a little difficult to make out, but at the end of the bridge in both photographs, you can see a truck that's pulled over into a turnout on the side of the road. So this is just demonstrating the visibility at the one lane bridge, as well as the fact that there are turnouts on either side. Now we're going to jump into the rainwater catchment calculations. And this is going to take a bit of explaining because it's a little, I don't want to say counterintuitive, but it's not. It is a little bit counterintuitive. So essentially, year zero is where the applicant is proposing to construct the pond to collect rainwater from this year, this wet season. And so what you'll see is in year two, there are an acre of outdoor cultivation, nursery space and light depth cultivation. So that is going to be used for the calculations of how much water the project can collect in that year, as well as, I'm sorry, for the next year. But they are used for how much water the project will need for the current year, if that makes sense. So really, the kind of two columns that are going to be really important is the total annual water need essentially. And that's going to be based on how far the project is built out, given, you know, whatever phase it's in. And then the second to last column, or even the furthest to the right column, second to last is going to show how much water the applicant will have in storage from the previous year's construction with evaporation factored in. And then the far right column is essentially just checking that box and saying, yes, every year there is enough, you know, rainwater that should be available in storage for the projected needs. Really, what I wanted to kind of point out is that the applicant, or rather, the agent that prepared this, supplied calculations that accounted for multiple consecutive drought years. So that's going to be important. So we can just go through this really quickly. Looks like about 350,000 gallons is required in year one. In a drought year, that should be, they should be able to collect 600,000 gallons, as well as year two, 700,000 gallons approximately. And then collecting 766,000 gallons, and I believe that's 714,000 gallons. And, you know, I don't want to just kind of list off numbers. So I'm just going to let you kind of look at this and kind of see for yourself. But every year does have sufficient water storage. One other thing that I did want to point out is that some of these numbers have an asterisk next to them. Those zeros that you can see there with the processing building. That is, given the proposal to use the groundwater well, they're not accounting for that water use. That would be coming from the well if approved. And if the alternative is required, the applicant will have to get additional rainwater catchment, infrastructure and storage to meet the increased demand. There are no calculations for after year five, but one thing that's important important to point out, excuse me, is that after year five, everything will be built out. So year five, the applicant will have PG&E power permitting, an acre of mixed light that wouldn't have collected rainwater from the previous year, but that would be included in year six. So what you would see from year six on is regardless of whether it's a drought year or an average rainfall year, rainwater storage would be at capacity. So that number on the far right would be 2,162,000 gallons every year. That is accounting for evaporation over the course of the year. Also, I did receive word from Public Works to include an additional condition. It's just to adhere to all the recommendations in the engineer evaluation. So staff is also recommending that this be included with the recommended conditions of approval. And then we have the staff recommendation, which is that the commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration prepared for Cisco Farms Inc. pursuant to section 15074 State Sequel Guidelines, make all the required findings for approval, and adopt the resolution approving Cisco Farms project as recommended by staff, subject to recommended conditions. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be available.
Thank you so much. Before we get to public comment, I want to ask the commission for questions for the staff. Commissioner Newman, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chair. I have a question regarding the PG&E power and the build out, the stages. So did I hear correctly that it currently has 200 amps available right now? What stage does that take it to without having to get more power?
So with the current power on site, 200 amps and the proposed solar array, that takes it up to and including year four. The applicant doesn't need or doesn't project that they'll need an upgrade from PG&E until they're about to start phase five, year five. So that would be the phase that's put on hiatus unless they add more solar to make up for that deficit.
And part of that question is with the A11, or is that A?
Yes, sir, that was A11.
A11. Priority issuance of building permits or the stages there. Adequate electricity is available to the satisfaction of the planning director. I just wanted to be certain or check and see, will that include generators at all powered by gasoline or any other fossil fuel?
That was not the intent, no. But if, you know, that needs to be more clear, that can definitely be something that's added.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner O'Neill?
I was a little confused by some of the numbers on the water because it went by kind of fast. So maybe you can just make sure I understand. So they're saying they need 2,840,000 gallons when they're out in full build out?
2,840,000 gallons is their storage capacity. The project actually requires less water than that, but to account for-
2,650,000 gallons?
That is the size of the pond. The project, I believe, requires 2,152,000.
2,152. And so I didn't really get out of reading it, maybe I missed it. How much of that, that's all proposed to come from rainwater? Nothing from the well?
That is correct, yeah. So with the inclusion of the 111,000 gallons, I think that bumps it up to, I think it's like in the ballpark of 2.2 million, but I don't know, those numbers off the top of my head.
So in those columns, I was trying to follow, but it kind of went fast. Does, is, did the engineer who calculated that anticipate that there's adequate rainfall for 2,152,000 gallons? Is that what they were saying in all those columns?
Yeah, so there was two numbers at the second to last column that showed the total catchment amount. That, those two numbers, one of, sorry, the first number was an average rainfall year, which I believe is somewhere in the ballpark of 50 inches or might have been 60. The second number was the rainfall in a drought year, which was about 29 inches. So that's kind of why I wanted to point that out was every year, that second number was still in excess of the projected project needs. So even if every year the project would be built out, it was in a drought year where the applicant could expect 29 inches as opposed to the 50 or 60 on average, that would still be enough to provide for that, not that year, excuse me, the next year's phase, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mulder?
Oh, yeah. Right now be the time to do expertise as well before I ask questions? Just quick expertise. I played phone tag with Dylan Matol, but I never actually talked to him. I'm assuming it was about this project because he said it was something in the neighborhood. But never had a conversation with him, just being transparent. And yesterday, I met Robi Tenorio in person for the first time and just had a brief conversation. I was walking down the street, giving my wife, taking my wife something. She's like, oh, I recognize you. We had a five minute conversation, nothing too important, but just want to be transparent. But now to my questions through the chair to staff. I didn't hear in the staff report really honing in on finding 5H, where it talks about that resolution 1843 and where we're at in regards to the cap. Because I've heard, you know, there was a couple of comments about cumulative impacts. So it'd be nice to just put that on the record.
So it looks like there is a finding under 8G. So the project is proposed in the Cape Mendocino Planning Watershed, which is a cap of 650 permits and 223 acres. Approval of this project would result in 228 approved permits and 84.52 acres of cultivation in the Cape Mendocino Planning Watershed.
And then I wanted to do a follow up through the chair. From the way I remember the CCLUO, I believe it's 10 projects that can be of a certain large size. If this was approved, would it be number eight? Is that correct or incorrect?
I had looked into this. I believe it is the first. I, yeah, Cliff, you can jump in if I'm wrong.
Yeah, if I could, through the chair, the the cap that you're talking about comes out of the CCLUO, the second ordinance. And I believe this would be the first under the second ordinance. There is a number of them. And Director Ford will correct me if he thinks there's one other. But there have not been more than one other, if there is, that have been approved that are more than that size under the CCLUO. There is some that that were approved under the previous ordinance. But those are not subject to that same cap.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners before we move on to public comment? Thank you so much for that excellent report. I would now like to open this item for public comments. We'll start with attendees in the room. Please come on up, sir.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this proposed project. My name is Drew Barber. I'm a permitted cannabis grower and community member and direct neighbor of the project. I support working lands that build our rural community. I've known the proponent for over 20 years. And I, like many of our shared neighbors, respect him both for his business acumen and neighborly respect. The land is reasonable for a cannabis operation. It's relatively flat, good aspect, not great pasture. However, several aspects of this operation are deeply concerning as a neighbor, as a farmer, and as a community member. For comparison, the footprint of this project is over 24 times the size of my farm. And because of multiple harvests, the project at full operation has the capacity to bring in more than 140 times the annual volume my farm brings in. In my opinion, the project site is suited for a smaller scale operation than proposed. Point one I want to make is that there's, I don't believe there's enough water to support the project at the scale, especially during dry years. The project's designed to have adequate rain catchment. However, the scale of catchment area during dry years will impact infiltration underneath that entire covered area that you saw in the image there. That'll affect groundwater recharge. There's also a proposed well that will also impact stream flow and spring and well water available to neighbors such as myself. Public infrastructure is unprepared to handle this scale of operation. PG&E cannot commit to more power drops for 10 plus years. The petroleum area has been having unplanned outages weekly. The access road, as we saw, has some issues. It goes through a quiet neighborhood currently and is not maintained for this level of impacted use by the large number of employees. Permits over three acres on large parcels sound good on paper. However, the result on the ground is that the large parcel size does not insulate the operation or the neighbors from its impact. As with other similar sized project, the project will take place within 30 feet of the neighboring fence line, my fence line. The scale and type of operation of this proposal is better suited to industrial zoning and exceeds our community expectation of ag zoning. Every community where other three plus acre, three plus acre greenhouse space growers are located have neighbors whose lives have been impacted by relentless 24 hour a day sound and light. I spoke with a neighbor this morning who slept outside during the summer on her property for over 40 years. In the last three years, she stopped because of the 24 hour fan noise from other nearby permitted fan, permitted grows. It's not the commissioner or commission's job to ensure rural places are always quiet because working lands make noise. But permits of this scale are accompanied by unwelcome industrial activities that exceed the capacity of reasonable impacts on our neighborhoods. This creates animosity between the cannabis business and non growers. The animosity gives rise to efforts like the unwelcome and misguided citizens reform initiative. If cannabis operations are going to succeed in Humboldt County, which is very much in question right now, it will need to be done in a way that our communities can be proud of and not on an industrially loud, power consumptive manner that creates a high volume of product and negatively impacts surrounding communities. I'm sad to be here today to argue against this permit that my respected colleague and the proponent has put tens of thousands of dollars into over a year of his time. I'm disappointed that the expectation that entitlement to this scale of a project has been established both by the county and by consultants. The permit process is so arduous and expensive that proponents are encouraged to apply for everything they could ever imagine wanting to grow. And it's cheaper than asking for more later. So here we are with overinflated permits, bigger than the proponent wants-
Can you wrap it up, please?
And and bigger than the community wants and bigger than the capacity of our ecology and infrastructure can handle. So in my opinion, this is not good planning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have another, we have another member of the audience wishing to comment. Please come on up, sir. And you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Dylan Matol. I'm a resident also of the Matol Valley, also a cannabis farmer. In Honeydew, I have one acre of cultivation. I don't have anything prepared, so I kind of wanted to speak more generally about this project and and my thoughts on it as someone who lives in the community, also as a neighbor. You know, bearing in mind that, you know, we've seen a massive reduction of the overall cumulative impact from cannabis farms. This project is in fact large, but we also have seen a decrease in overall impact to the community. We hear a lot of talk about Honeydew having been destroyed, the Matol Valley being used as an example of everything that's wrong. And as somebody that does live in the community, I actually don't entirely agree with that. I find that, you know, what we are seeing is an impact of a lot of people moving away and lots of jobs being disappearing. And so while I do think that there are some valid neighbor concerns being brought about this project, that everything should not always just be yes or no, that we should look at the concerns. I think the power issue in itself will restrict a lot of this phasing. And I think that should be looked at closely. Three acres of outdoor cultivation in phase one certainly will not bring that many employees. I grow one acre of outdoor with two employees, actually mostly myself and one other. So, you know, that that impact is not equal across the boards of all type of cultivation. So I think that looking at the phases here and and looking at the power that's available and being reasonable about, you know, how we move this forward is what should be done. I also just want to speak to the fact that there have, this owner of this project has met with community members at the community center. There's been a lot of talk on our local Google bulletin boards. So this is, this is somebody that's born and raised in the area. This is somebody who made a, in the midst of all of the chaos we're seeing in the market, has made a choice to buy a large ranch and invest what he had left into this business. And I think that that should be considered as far as as who we're dealing with. And the fact that when there are issues that come up, I think that he's a reasonable person who's going to be willing to work with his neighbors. So that would be my comment is that this is not a person who has a history of being a bad neighbor. There have been issues, I've been told, with things on his existing project, and he's done what he can to address those. So. So I think there's a lot going on in our community. We're, we're looking at, you know, ordinances to virtually shut our industry down. And so I think that moving forward, we're going to see a lot less projects and that they should, they should really be looked at on their individual merit and not swept into the.
Can you wrap it up, sir?
Yep.
Okay.
Into, you know, all size, size, everything is not about size. Size does not determine whether a project is good or not. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment.
And could I say one more thing?
Quickly.
I think we need clarification because there was a presentation at the Board of Supervisors, I believe, last week or the week before, and I think there's probably some serious public misunderstanding of this cap. Because after sitting through that message, my understanding was this project would be number eight of the 10. So maybe we could have Director Ford explain that again, because that is what was presented to the public, was that we would only have 10 projects over three acres.
Okay, thank you for that. And when we get through public comment, I will refer that question to the director. Or, yeah, that suggestion. We have no other comments in the room, but I do see a couple of hands up on Zoom. So I will now move to the Zoom portion of the public comment. And my first Zoom caller is Public 7454, Mr. Swatsky. Your turn.
Noah, can you hear me? You guys are still breaking up quite a bit. I've, I've tried it on two or three different outlets here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine. I apologize for that.
Okay, so, so, you know, this, this is a new permit. It's a very large new permit. And you're not changing the goalposts at all under the circumstances by requesting and requiring some things maybe that you haven't requested or required before. I don't know how deep this person's pockets are, but with the potential thing being put on the 2012, 24 ballot, which was mentioned by a prior speaker, and a few other things, the public is, is really apprehensive about who's going to remediate and clean these sites up. Earlier in the meeting, I had some objections, wasn't able to because of technology, about a one-acre grow. But we don't want to be the ones who have to pay to remediate these when the people realize that they are no longer able to participate in the business. You already have hundreds, if not thousands, of these things out there potentially we will pay to clean up. So I would be asking that you maybe set a precedent. This is a new grow, big grow, but some amount of money be set aside or a bond, and it's been told to me they can't get a bond. A cash bond can happen. Everybody has to bond things of this nature to remediate and clean the, the thing up. It does fail, which many of us feel it will. So I'm just asking, please don't add another five acres of cleanup at how many, probably about millions of dollars to clean up these things when they just get abandoned and left to go. No matter how good, a whole bunch of people were cleared, wonderful participants, wonderful farmers, they're gone. And they've left us with the, the skeletons and the ghosts blowing in the wind with all the negative impacts out there. I think it's finally time that the Planning Commission realized what a big mistake they've made, and don't continue to make that same mistake. Find some way that this is going to get cleaned up after it potentially fails, and I can see many ways it will. I also have concerns, it looks like the ancillary use here because of, you know, is, is what, one and a half acre of propagation, and that far exceeds your normal, whatever it is, you allowed 10% there. And all, we're not following that particular thing. I guess it's supposed to be a processing area for other areas. And your picture of your road, I didn't see any turnouts. I, that road looked totally inadequate for a normal-sized grow, let alone this one. I realized it's a pinch point, but none of the other roads were shown. Is it self-certified or, or who's certifying this? And how come CalFire didn't weigh in as far as what they requested or required for water storage? I think 10,000 gallons is proposed. I mean, you can't put out a campfire that's gone away from you with that.
Please wrap it up, time's up.
That is my comment. Thank you for my time to speak.
Thank you, sir, for your comment. We do have one more Zoom caller wishing to comment. That is North Post, North Point Consulting Group. I will recognize you now. Go ahead.
Good evening. Commissioners and, Noah, can you hear me clearly?
I can hear you clearly. Until public comment. Sorry, Praj, but I can hear you clearly. Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, if you can hear me, I'll just trust that.
We can hear you fine in here, yes. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much for putting in your time and considering this project. I'm here at a conference room with myself, the applicant, Carl Benman, and Kate, the applicant's agent for the project. We just briefly, I'll go through and discuss a couple of the items and questions that were brought up. And we're hoping that if further comments or questions come up, we'd like the opportunity to address those at the end of public comment, and we'll be here and available during deliberation if you have more comments or questions. Just briefly, wanted to go through and say that we're all aware of the PG&E constraints and that the applicant here has zero intent of any generator. There's no generator proposed, and that Phase 5, that is the energy-intensive phase, as described earlier, will be deferred if the PG&E sources not become available. When it comes to the project, it is all on rainwater for the cultivation activities. I wanted to just be clear that my staff did work on that, and in doing it, it was set based on the 2017 drought year, 2013, excuse me. And there was actually a previous year on record slightly less than that, at 27.4 inches of rain in the area. And that drought or lowest rainfall on record was the number used to calculate and generate and show there's adequate water captured from rain alone. The average rainfall in the petroleum area is 73.9 inches. So we're looking at much less than half of the average rainfall supports this project. Regarding the cap, you know, it looks like we're at 84 acres, which is less than half the cap. I wanted to touch in on the capacity of the road and looking, excuse me. I wanted to touch in on the capacity of the road in the 69 trips per day. I want to make it clear that the 69 trips per day are not every day. That's at full buildout during the intensive planting and harvesting. It is scheduled at a maximum of, it's outdoors, it's going to be just once a year. Eventually, there would be an acre of mixed light if that ever occurs, and that would happen a couple of times a year. But wanting to point out, the 69 trips per day is not going to happen every day and is only associated with the peak activities. And during the first several phases, will likely only be a couple weeks out of the year. I wanted to point out about consistency. I went out to this project site, now been a year or so more ago, and of the properties, I've traveled around Humboldt County and looked at a lot of properties. This is a wide-open agriculture property, nice and flat, no habitat nearby, no tree lines. It is absolutely a project where, a project of this size and caliber fits. I want to indicate that, you know, it's only five acres of cultivation. If we actually look in the county's general plan and description of activities allowed on AE parcels and described as general agriculture in the county, five acres of greenhouses are principally permitted on all properties where general agriculture is allowed, including AE, AG, and TPZ. And that's been in the general plan historically, and this project does not exceed that limit. I wanted to point out, where would you ever see a project limited to three acres of agriculture on a 1,000-acre ranch? This is a very small footprint on a large ranch. I also wanted to just touch base and state that Carl did reach out and meet with all his neighbors many months ago, as soon as this project was noticed for the public clearinghouse. He is proactive in reaching out to the neighbors and the community and is part of this community and cares to keep the neighborhood and the function continuing as it is. I also wanted to mention that the ancillary, nursery space called out, it's not ancillary, it's an eventual commercial nursery in order to supply clones and cuts to the community. And so that is not an oversized ancillary nursery. I want to state I did prepare the road evaluation, and I assessed the entire road, and me and staff have gone out there a couple of times and measured things to the exactness that we could, and we stand behind a report and the function of that road. That's my initial comments to what I've heard from the group. And like I said, we're here to answer any further questions and would be appreciative if we were called upon if any more come up. Thank you for your time. Appreciate your service.
Thank you for that presentation on behalf of the applicant. Point of clarification from Commissioner Mulder?
Just want to clarify, that was part of our. That was part of our new rules that we passed last week, where the applicants allowed 10 to 20 minutes for a presentation, because we went 2 minutes and 36 seconds past the three minute, just for the people listening on. Correct?
Yes.
Thank, thank you. I, I should have made a note of that. I, I looked at the clock, I thought we were at three minutes, and then I realized this is the agent with the applicant, so this is essentially the applicant's presentation. But I, I really appreciate you calling that out, because we do have new, clear guidelines on how we're going to do that, and I probably should have mentioned that at the start of those comments. Thank you, Commissioner Mulder. And we do have them available to answer any questions that may come up from the commission. Before we, is this a question for, okay, so before we close public comment, I'm going to let Commissioner O'Neill ask a question.
I'm kind of curious, because I've seen this on other projects where there's very large parcels, why you push the project almost to the border of the property? And I know that was a comment from one of the public speakers about it being very close to their property. Maybe you can help me understand why you would do that?
That was a question for you, Praj. Can you, can, and I will recognize you again to answer that question, please.
Yeah, I was furthest away from wanting. Oh, hold up. So Carl, do you want to take that question? Sure. Hi, my name's Carl, I'm the applicant. I located the pond basically because it's adjacent to the neighbor's pond. And then I put the greenhouses there as part of a wind block. The, the site gets pretty, sort of, sort of gold to green block from the west and the park.
Could you repeat that, sir? You were breaking up a little bit. Could you, could you repeat your last 20 seconds of what you said?
Could you ask that question again? I'm sorry, we couldn't hear what you said.
My question was, I've seen this in the past where there's a very large parcel, and the project is pushed right up against, as close to the boundary as you can. And I wondered, was there a reason for that? Could it not have been situated in a way that it wasn't so close to the property so that it might not impact the neighbors?
What the answer that Carl gave is that he cited it for the most reasonable place to put a pond on the property, and that he, I laid out the layout so there would be a wind block. It was an open prairie. There is not habitat adjacent to it, and it's in a location that almost no one can see. And so it was cited there based on its topography and isolation.
So you're saying then, then it shouldn't impact the neighbors for sound or light or anything like that?
No, it would be completely within the ordinance's limitations.
Okay, thank you for that response. Do we have any more questions at the moment for the applicant or his agent? Yes, okay. Seeing none, or since we don't, I am going to close public comment, since we don't have any other hands raised or.
Sorry, I just like.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. I understand, but she is, she is actually in the Zoom meeting, has not raised her hand. And so now that we've had public comment open for a while, we don't have any more hands raised, I am going to close public comment. Thank you so much. I will, I just want to refer to the issue that was raised by one of the speakers about the cap and some confusion about what was said at the supervisors' meeting. Director Ford, could you speak to that, please?
I will. And Chair, I'd like to say that I did get an email. You are still garbled. And I don't.
And it's, and it's only, and it's only me.
Yep.
It's, it's only you and Commissioner Mulder can use the same microphone and not be garbled. He just did it.
It must be you with the circle laptop.
Yeah, I don't know. Like there's some interference or.
Is, is your audio on, on the, the laptop?
It's not. It's muted. The microphone is off.
Is there another program, though, that has access to the microphone? It might be.
Fair question. I'm just going to close all other.
I don't sound very good on the mic. You do, you do sound fine right now. I wonder if it's when you're holding the mic.
Possibly when I'm holding the mic. Now, when I take it off. Still garbled. I really apologize for this.
It's the tones, it's the tones you're talking and then you have to be a certain distance. I've gotten critiqued by lots of people in public comments.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm eager to solve this problem. It's just weird that sometimes it's okay, sometimes it's not, but I'm, I'm closing all the other programs besides Zoom. Is it, is it coming through now?
Right now, you're on resume.
Not sure what else to do. I, I don't know how, the Zoom program, I, I need to have it open, but it's muted and my audio is off. Well, shall we proceed?
I mean, that can cross screen, so it's really back and forth.
At least you're able to hear it in the moment, whether it's coming through clearly or not.
Yeah, it's perfectly clear.
Okay, I'll keep my hands off the mic if that's making a difference. Okay, we've closed public comment, but there was a, an issue or question that was raised that I believe the director was going to speak to before we bring it back to the commission for further discussion.
Yeah, so I think that there probably has been a reference to treating these cumulatively between 1.0 and 2.0. But in looking at this closely, and I'd like to walk the commission through this and allow the commission to make a determination on, on what you believe the interpretation should be. So in 1.0, it identifies that on parcels 320 acres or larger in size, the eligible zoning districts described in the appropriate section, you, you get one acre per 100 acres once you have a minimum of 320 acres. And then it says up to a maximum of 12 permits may be issued with a use permit, subject to the limitations in 55.4.8.1. So that, that is what 1.0 says. Okay? And then when we go to 2.0, it identifies that not more than eight acres of commercial cannabis cultivation permits may be issued to a single person. So, so it went from basically allowing an individual to have four permits to having a maximum of eight acres. That's the difference between 1.0 and 2.0. And then the second sentence there says not more than 10 persons shall be granted permits authorizing three or more acres of cultivation pursuant to the provisions of 55.4.6.1.2C. When you turn over to that provision, that's the provision that identifies on 320 acres. It identifies that cultivation areas must have access from paved. It identifies that cultivation areas must have access from paved roads with the center line striped meeting category four standard. Exceptions may be considered subject to a use permit, which this one does, where there's been a road evaluation and the hearing officer then can consider public health, safety, and welfare in issuing the permit. The thing that's important about that is that this provision that is specifically referenced to relative to the maximum of 10 permits is specifically a section in 2.0. And it, and the, the section in 2.0 is different than the section in 1.0.
And when, when it says eight acres, is that, could that be in different locations?
It could be in different locations, yes. So one person can cultivate up to eight acres.
Okay. Well, it sounds like there's no limit on the first 1.0.
Well, 1.0, you can have up to four permits.
No, I mean, there's no limit on how many permits you would issue? Yeah. There's a limit on a person, but not on how many people can have it.
That is correct. That's why in 2.0, that provision was put in there for 2.0, but that was not retroactively applied.
So it's not 10 total for 1.0 and 2.0?
Correct.
Okay.
That's, that's...
Commissioner Mulder and then Commissioner Newman.
So, you guys might be shocked to hear me say this, but I'm, that part confused me because I, going through all those different hearings to 2.0, I was under the impression that it would, once 2.0 went through, it was a cap of regard, it blended 1.0 and 2.0 together and there was a cap of 10 total. So that everyone I've talked to, I think, is confused in the same breath. And I did hear the hearing a couple of weeks ago and I was under the impression this would be number eight of 10.
I, I think that that was the, probably the intent, but as I look at it tonight in black and white, that's not how it's written.
Oh, interesting. Yeah, please.
And I would also agree that there's probably a few other things that, going through the hearings in that ordinance, that there was intents and, you know, little edits like a word change or, I mean, they're talking like, I don't know, 500, 800 hours of hearings or something like that, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Newman?
And I am hearing what director is saying in the verbatim, in the words that are being spoken, but I think the intent is important as well. What was presented and what was intended at those hearings is, is super important because the wording should have been put in with what the intent was, is what I interpret that to be. So if we have to go back and revisit it, that's what I would propose, is taking a look at that and looking directly at that and going back to the intent and putting the wording in with what the intent was spoken about.
Commissioner Mulder, but before I pass it to you, I just wanted to ask a question. You and Mr. Matol have referred to Board of Supervisors here a couple of weeks ago. Is that the one about the citizens' ordinance that was, that was that discussion? Okay, I was, thank you.
So those listening, yes, correct, that is that here, Board of Supervisors meeting?
Yeah.
Because they can't see me nod my head through the phone, so, this one. This is a question I think would be directly to the director or through the chair. Would it be safe for this commission to proceed cautiously and consider this potentially number eight towards that 10? And then when we maybe get to a different future agenda item, or we get to a later item on the agenda, maybe possibly agenda is something where we look at possibly asking that question to those that appoint us here?
Could I answer that question after a short break?
I don't need it right now.
Certainly, you could, we could, after this item, you mean? Or would you like to take a break right now to...
Well, frankly, I'd like to confer with counsel.
Okay. Even though we're in the middle of this item, it is about the time that we often take a break. So we have closed, closed, we have closed public comment, we often, often, obviously have not concluded our discussion of the item or gotten to a decision, but we can take a recess in the middle of this item and return in five to 10 minutes and pick it up again.
Yep, thank you.
There's one thing that I'd like to say is that not all of us were at those hearings, so I don't know what the intent was. So I would have to refer to legal counsel to review it anyway. And if there was an error in the way it was written, then, you know, maybe at 10 we put a temporary moratorium until it's reevaluated. But I wouldn't feel comfortable saying I didn't sit through 500 hours of anything. So all I can know is, you know, what I read and what legal interprets it to mean, so.
Okay, with that, we will take a short recess and we will reconvene at, let's say, Maybe it was my phone, crazy as that seems, maybe it was. Okay.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we are, we are coming back into session here to continue with public hearing item one, that's Cisco Farms. We had taken and closed public comment and we're now having a discussion. And I will refer back to Director Ford, who was looking into a question of how the ordinances speak to the matter of a cap.
Correct. There's two things that I think need to come into play in, in making an interpretation. One is you can't read something in that's not there. And, and so it, it does not speak to, going back to addressing 1.0 in that provision. And then secondly, and this is always the one that is important to consider, and this comes out of 55.4.3.1. This says, "Applications for commercial cannabis activity land use permits filed on or before December 31, 2016 shall be governed by the regulations in effect at the time of their submittal, except as follows and is otherwise prescribed herein." And, and so basically, if there were 11 applications for more than three acres, all three of those would need to be processed under 1.0. So the 1.0 are not subject to that cap. Now, the good news is, is there are maybe two others that are more than three acres that are currently left in the process. There's, there's not a lot, and 1.0 obviously was expired when 2.0 was adopted.
Commissioner Mulder?
And I just, I just wanted to clarify, thank you for that. The part, the other part that I was thinking regardless of those cap numbers, we would still be well under that. And I would, I didn't have any hesitation as far as that cumulative effect. And I, you know, it'd give us time later on, future agenda items or whatever, to worry, to try to flush that out. And even hearing the director say there's a couple more that would still be under that 10 or 12, so, comfortable in that aspect.
Did anyone, Commissioner O'Neill, did you, did you want to speak about this issue?
No, I think, I think you answered my question. And this gives, if there's more than one attorney that needs to confer on this and come up with a solid response that you stand by, or if the Board of Supervisors says, wait a minute, that's not what we wanted, there's time to do that. But I don't think it should be on our responsibility to be interpreting the law or what the intent of it was, just, you know, to read it on its face value, which I think you've clearly explained to us. Are we still imposing solar on these projects? Or are we just going straight up PG&E and that's okay as long as they have? Was it solar only when they were on diesel generators that we were concerned with?
I believe this does have a proposal to install photovoltaic solar power. They are not proposing generator as the...
At all? And we're not concerned with the PG&E? And if, they've already indicated that they can only go so far without having three-phase or power, and they don't know if they'll be able to get that in any reasonable amount of time? So that might slow down their, their project progression?
Well, it seems clear, at least based upon what I know right now, is that PG&E is not going to be out there in the foreseeable future. And so if they are intending to put in phase five, that's going to have to be done with photovoltaic power.
Director Ford, just to follow up on that, when you say foreseeable future, you mean even four years, five years out?
I, based upon what I know right now, I couldn't envision it being within 10 years.
Okay, wow. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, if, yeah, Commissioner Mulder, you have another question or comment? Please.
I just wanted to hone back in on A11. And I, the way I'm reading this is they get, you know, they have all that outdoor, and then even if for some reason they have energy calculator, there's unforeseen energy usage with light deprivation or ancillary services, like nursery services, they can't get a building permit unless they put in solar if they don't have PG&E, correct or incorrect?
Well, A11 does not specifically say PG&E. So I think that that could use a little bit of clarification, that the, there is demonstrating adequate electricity from an allowed source, i.e. PG&E or another renewable, onsite renewable source.
That would really clean that condition up with that language. Thank you.
To expand on that, if they're building living quarters, don't they have to have solar anyway? I mean, isn't that a state requirement?
To construct new residences at this point, yes, that is true.
Commissioner Mulder?
Is that also true if it's farm labor housing? I think there's some weird, there's a couple weird variances I've read there.
That may be true.
Just since we're talking about this, is the photovoltaic, that's proposed, that hasn't been constructed yet, has it? No, okay. Thank you. Commissioner McCaber?
Are we still in the comments? Questions or comments?
We're, we're in commissioner discussion whether questions or comments. We've closed, closed public comment, but if necessary, we could open it up to speak to the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I think that this project has very few environmental impacts overall, especially for the size of it. So I'm really happy to see that, especially in terms of water. And then also, I was very happy to see the dark sky standards adhered to. One thing that I would like to see changed, however, is instead of 30 minutes allotted to twilight, I'd like to see one hour. So for example, crepuscular organisms, you know, they're, they're active during the astronomical twilight, which is, you know, just before sunrise and just after sunset. And at the equator astronomical twilight, it's a 70 to 85 minutes, but it can be much, much longer in higher latitudes than that. And so 30 minutes is very, very short. It's a very short time for those organisms. And it's really important, especially in that area, especially for this project, which is isolated, which offers a lot of advantages in almost every other way. But just in terms of this one, I think it would be important to have an hour allotted to astronomical twilight and have the language reflect that it is astronomical twilight as well. So one hour just before sunrise and one hour just after sunset.
So just for clarification, I believe you're referring to condition B2?
That's right.
That's the one that says, just to read it for the audience, "All artificial lighting shall be fully contained within structures such that no light escapes, e.g. through blackout curtains. Structures shall be enclosed between 30 minutes prior to sunset and 30 minutes after sunrise to prevent disruption to trepiscular wildlife."
Correct. And I would like to see that heightened to 60 minutes.
If I can just ask staff a question, this is one of the standard conditions that's in all of our projects, is that correct? Okay.
Just in this particular case, it is in an area that does have a lot of wildlife. There are more dark sky concerns there. It's one of the few places that still has dark sky. And it is quite isolated as well, so it would make a big difference.
Other comments, questions? Commissioner Mulder?
I hear the concerns, but I just want to clarify, this B2, that is language directly out of our ordinance in regards to dark sky, is that correct or incorrect?
That is correct.
But I think because of the size of this, and like you said, the location, that that could be something that we would add. And if, you know, someone wants to appeal it, then they can, but I don't think it's unreasonable, given the size of the row.
And we could see if the applicant was eminable. I believe the applicant would be.
We, we certainly could bring them back on and ask that question. Commissioner Mulder?
I'm not opposed to asking the applicant. I also want to bring light to the scale and size of the project. There's three acres of outdoor. There's another acre of light deprivation, which is zero artificial lighting. So we're actually talking about one acre of mixed light and then the ancillary nursery space, so about an acre and a half of illuminated area, not five acres of illuminated area.
Thank you so much for that. And the mixed light component would be phase five, I believe. So we're not going to get to that for several years, but we do have the nurseries that are going to be in operation before that. If the commission is okay with this, I could, I could open this, I could bring the, I could invite the applicant, yeah, it does appear that the applicant is still there on the Zoom call. I could open public comment again and ask them for their thoughts on this additional...
I would recommend not public comment, just a direct question to the applicant for our rules.
Sorry, thank you for our rules. Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Mulder. This is not opening public comment, this is a direct question to the applicant who is available through Zoom. And I see the hand up next to North Point Consulting. Can we go ahead and unmute them? Yes, you are unmuted.
Well, commissioners and Chair Levy, we heard the question and Carl right here, consider that it has no problem increasing that dark sky requirement to 60 minutes as discussed by the commission.
Thank you so much for your willingness to adapt your conditions per our concerns.
Yep, no problem.
While we have the agent and the applicant on the phone for a moment, are there any other questions that have arisen that we would like to put to them? Nope. Okay. Thank you so much, Praj. I think we're going to take it back to the commission then. Okay. Other thoughts, or do we want... Other thoughts or do we want? Where do we want to go here? Yes, Commissioner Newman.
I just want to double check the language on A11. We were going to possibly amend that to what exactly in there?
Great question.
We were talking.
I think you guys had wanted to clarify the generator usage there.
The director had the language.
Yeah.
Director Ford?
If I could, basically it would read almost exactly like it does. Prior to the issuance of building permits or initiation of any activities requiring the use of electricity for each of the proposed phases, the applicant shall provide documentation demonstrating adequate electricity in prints from an approved source, either PG&E or on, or an onsite renewable system.
Great. So that would clarify that, that those are the only acceptable options for adequate electricity. Okay, so we can include that in the, that edit to the condition 11. We can also, well, would, would the rest of the commission like to go ahead and, given the applicant's amendability to Commissioner McCaver's suggestion, shall we go ahead and also change commission, condition B2 to make 30 minutes into 60 minutes before sunset and after sunrise? Yep, we're all okay with that, thanks for that. Okay, so we have two edits we want to make to the recommended conditions.
There's also the additional Public Works condition.
Sorry, can someone remind me about that one?
The extra condition of approval that all, from Public Works, that all mitigation measures in the road evaluation or engineer report would be done somewhere along those lines.
Ah, yes, that was mentioned in the staff report. That's, that's not reflected in these, I was a little unclear on that point, we need to add that.
That would be added as A12, I would see it as, because the A section is project specific, correct?
Correct, I think that, I'm looking at that as A13.
Right, we've got 12 already.
But that is correct, that was something that was not specifically captured in there that was recommended after publication of the staff report by the Department of Public Works.
Okay, now, thank you so much for clarifying that, Mr. Johnson, and thanks, Mr., thanks Trip for, for reminding us about that one that came up earlier. Okay, so we have three additions or changes to be made to these conditions. Commissioner McCaver.
Yeah, I would motion to adopt a mitigated negative declaration prepared for Cisco Farms Incorporated pursuant to section 15074 of the State Sequel Guidelines, adopt the resolution, item 20, resolution number 22, and make all required findings for approval of the conditional use permits and approve Cisco Farms Incorporated conditional use permit as recommended by staff and subject to the recommended conditions with the addition of A13 as proposed by Public Works and the amended condition on the dark sky with 60 minutes instead of 30 for the astronomical twilight.
That's B2, amended to B2.
Thank you. And also the alteration proposed for A11.
Thank you so much for that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, and I just wanted to add a little bit of comment discussion to that. Yes, when you look at this project, the scale, if you look at it on its face value of five acres is, is large to many people's opinions. But when you look at the phasing aspect of it and then our conditions where the phasing has to be, the check-in all the time, and the reality of energy, it's probably going to be more like a three acre project for 10 plus years, but maybe there's money in there for them to have renewable energy and get that other part before PG&E, but it really gives the, I appreciate the way the county brought this forward and the applicant brought this forward, so that way it's like, hey, here's a bigger project and kind of phase it in. And I appreciate that.
If I could just take a moment to comment too, I, I really appreciate the way this project was presented and the way the applicant and their agent phased it very clearly. The staff report reflected that clearly, what would happen in each of the phases, and it feels to me like a, like a responsible, sustainable build out, and it clearly has a lot of support from the neighbors as reflected in the letters that we received. So we have a motion and a second, any other comments before we take a vote? All right, Trip, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
And Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Yeah, they have. Hey, Josh, before we proceed to the last item, I just want to check, am I coming through clearly now? Great, glad we, for the moment, fixed it. I probably shouldn't have said anything. Okay. We, we do now have just one more item under public hearings, and that is item two, appointment term and removal of planning commissioners countywide. Basically just a, yeah, a review of the, of the resolution pertaining to the supervisor's recent decision about this. Can I, before we have public comment on it, if any, can I have a, just a brief summary of that item from the director or from other staff, please?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, I'm going to share my screen and just walk through it if I can, real quick. Okay. And, sorry, I need to move the boxes out of, out of the way here. So this is, got just a couple of parts to it that, for the most part, don't, it looks like a whole lot more than it is. There's, there's two basic changes. The first basic change is to have the at-large appointment serve staggered two-year terms. The other basic change is to allow removal of appointed planning commissioners, commissioners not appointed at large, but appointed by individual district supervisors with a four-fifths vote of the board of supervisors. There's a kind of a wording change, but not a practical change, and that is that planning commissioners serve during the duration of the supervisor for that district. So I, I know there's some discussion previously about, you know, every four years you need to reappoint, well, basically if commissioner or if a supervisor from a certain district is in office, they've appointed that commissioner, that commissioner doesn't need to be reappointed every four years.
Understood.
So just, I'll walk through the changes here so you can see them. The first is the term of office, and this is a change from members appointed by a board member shall run concurrent with the term of office for the appointing board member. That's what I just mentioned.
Yes, thanks.
And then members appointed at large by the board of supervisors shall serve staggered two-year terms commencing, basically, there's a term that's coming due at the end of this year. So that term would then be appointed January 1st of 2023 for a term expiring them on December 31st. I'm, I'm sorry, no, for, on January 2023, there would be a two-year term going to 2025 for the term of the commissioner that's expiring on December 31st, 2022. And then the stagger would be that the, the other term, which normally would expire in 2024, then would expire, would be appointed the following year. So.
Right.
And then there's some renumbering there, which really isn't material other than to allow those additions that were put in. And then going down to the end of the draft ordinance, a member of the commission may be removed without cause and at any time by the supervisor represented the supervisory old district from which the commissioner is appointed. That is all existing language, so that, that's there. And then there's the addition or by a four-fifths vote of the board of supervisors. And then at-large members may be removed without cause and at any time by majority vote of the full board of supervisors, that's existing language.
Thanks. Okay, we have a couple of questions about this, Commissioner Mulder, Commissioner McCaver.
Thank you. I have a question just regarding the, the logic. So if any commissioner can be removed at any time with a four-fifths vote, why have some commissioners that have two-year terms and some have four-year terms? What is the, what is the benefit? It seems like we've been presented with a conclusion for a set of arguments that we don't see, so I don't have any arguments nor any of the premises that might have been there for a deductive argument. And it doesn't, it's not clear to me what the advantage is of having a two-year term if any commissioner can be removed at any time anyway.
Well, I think the, the desire is not to just arbitrarily be in a situation of having to remove commissioners. But the desire, as, as I understood the board discussion, is to have accountability and to be evaluating what's going on. And so part of the discussion was whether or not the commission could function at five members or seven members. The board decided that seven members was still appropriate, but that given the fact that at-large members were reported, were appointed by the entire board, that a more regular check-in on those would be appropriate.
Right, but given that they can be removed by four-fifths vote at any time like any other commissioner, what is the value in having the two-year term?
They can actually be removed by a simple majority, not a four-fifths, which would be three.
Okay, well then, and that's an even stronger question.
But I think it gets down to the point that the board wouldn't want to be in a place of having to, in order to address concerns that may exist with the commission, to be removing commissioners all the time, it's much more efficient to appoint and be checking in on how the commission is doing, how the structure of the commission is functioning, how the membership is gelling, and then make a decision, you know, to reappoint or to, to change. And I think that was the simple logic of it.
And why would it be more important to check in with an at-large commissioner than an appointed commissioner, especially since an at-large commissioner requires the vote of all the supervisors and an appointed commissioner only requires the vote of one supervisor?
I, I think that's just it, is because it requires the vote of all versus an appointment. The change to allow an appointed commissioner to be removed was, is actually a really, really big change in this particular case.
Okay, well, my position on it is, and I am the at-large commissioner who has a term ending this year, is that it doesn't really follow that an at-large commissioner would be any different from an appointed commissioner. Indeed, if anything, I feel like an at-large commissioner is more vetted than an appointed commissioner in the sense that it requires a majority vote by all of the supervisors. And further, given that any commissioner can be removed by either a majority or a four-fifths vote, depending on the type of commissioner, it doesn't logically follow that the argument that I guess is behind this, it, that doesn't follow, so that's my position on it.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Mulder.
So I have a handful of things. I did follow this and listen to it, so I'm gonna just go off of my interpretation. I'm wrong often, just want to say that part. First off, in 1.3.2.2, if I remember following the hearing right, it was gonna be, because they're two-year terms, it was, don't, like, basically every other year, I think that should read for a at-large term expiring December 31st, 2023, not 2024. Because they would be appointed in '24.
So if I could, I know this is, this was confusing me when I was reading it. And so they do currently, that term currently expires December 31st, 2024, and they would normally be appointed January 1st of 2025, that's when the term currently would begin.
Okay.
So this is basically moving that up a year.
Okay.
But I think you make a really good point, because I, I see the ambiguity in the language. I mean, if, if I'm not mistaken, sorry to interject, I think what this really means to say is January 1st, 2024, for the at-large, at-large term that was set to expire 2024, it, it will no longer, right? It, it was, it was Brian's term, Commissioner Mitchell's term was set to expire December 31st, 2024, but it will now expire December 20, December 31st, 2023 and be, and begin again January 1st, '24, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I like that language.
Okay.
If you, if the commission wants to make that change, that would, that would be clarifying.
It follows what was said at that agenda item.
Right, I mean, in the, in the case of the one above it, the term of Commissioner McCaver is expiring 2022, it was, it's not changing the end of that term, so, but it was changed.
A point of clarification, do we get to decide or did the supervisors already decide?
I, I think the supervisors gave some direction in terms of what they want to accomplish.
So if we didn't agree with them, we could change it right now?
You can recommend to the board whatever you want.
See, that's what I'm confused, like, I thought it was a done deal and we were just going over what they already approved.
No, they have not approved this language.
Okay.
I, just to say, I thought that the substantive decision had been made, what's being brought before us is the language that is enacting what they decided, that's my understanding? Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mulder, go back to you, I interrupted you.
Okay, and then the couple, the, there's a couple more points. The way I read this, and I remember it was a little bit back and forth, and I could be wrong, but I think it's actually four-fifths vote to remove anyone from the commission, not a majority vote for that large, but I could be reading it wrong, I just, I remember there was some contention between a couple of different supervisors and I, if I heard it right, they finally agreed upon four-fifths for everyone, but I might be wrong.
That's not my recollection.
Okay. And then just for clarification, what I did here, as far as these different timelines, the way that, there's, the elections happen in two years, they would like to, for example, there's a, a new supervisor coming on in January and they, from my understanding, it was every two years, so that way the new supervisors could have input on the at-large commissioners every two years, so that way it was more of a consensus of the whole board. And that, I could be wrong, but that's kind of the way I heard. And with that same breath, if you're an at-large commissioner, it doesn't mean you can't reapply or be reappointed. I think it's just, that's the way I understood it, I could be totally wrong.
Did you, were you, were you done there? Okay, for now.
Could I ask another question? What, why, what would be the argument for a four-fifths vote for the appointed commissioners versus a majority vote for the at-large commissioners? Why are they considered to be more risky? Right, it's, it's strange.
You know, I, I just, before we go any further, I've just been reminded that we didn't get to public comment on this. You know, just before we go any further, I've just been reminded that we didn't get to public comment on this item. So I'd like to do that before we continue the discussion and I will be happy to have that discussion. Going back to participants, we do, so that was the presentation of the item. We had a couple of questions about that item. But now, and we will continue with the discussion and commissioners' questions, but I do want to open this matter for public comments. I see one hand raised in Zoom, that is Public 7454. Mr. Sawatsky, I recognize you and I hope you're able to hear me better than you were before. Mr. Sawatsky, you are unmuted.
Can you hear me, Noah? You're totally breaking up again. Whatever was happening before, I couldn't hear that you were gonna open public comment even so. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, I can hear you.
Hello?
You are being heard, Ken.
I've been asked to unmute, but I can't hear you. I'm gonna go to the TV just a minute.
Ken, we can hear you. Why don't you go ahead and talk?
You can hear me, okay, okay. I question a few things in this. I don't know, I didn't, I apologize, I wasn't here and I did not hear the discussion by the supervisors. But what would make sense was that every two years, actually both of the at-large people would come up for review. And that would be anytime you had a new supervisor coming on board, that you would have a review. And I strongly question whether their intent, whether they really meant to have, have the, and 1.3, and then, I hate to have to tell you, but when you print these things out, when you put that blue ink in there, it doesn't show up on a lot of people's printers at all. So it says 1.3.5/2.7. A member of the commission may be removed without cause at any time by the supervisor representing the district from which the commissioner is appointed. Or, and I think, I don't understand why they would not say, or with cause, by a four-fifths vote to the board of supervisors. I discussed, started discussing this a little bit with somebody else, not your current legal counsel, but another one in county council's office. And at that time, this person was under the impression of with cause would be, would be taken to remove those people. And so I wanted a definition of what with cause is, but apparently that's moot. If it actually, where's the supervisor's intent to just say, well, I don't like, if there were, let's say, four people of a political persuasion in there, and a fifth person they could just keep removing, their person without any cause, any reason? That really is very troubling to me in an appointment process where somebody can't have a person on there and politically attempt to be removed without any cause whatsoever. I don't like Mr. Mulder's conservative, or he acts short here, so we're just gonna remove him. This really is concerning to me and I need to reach out to the supervisor to see if that's what their real intent was. There seems to be a few other things in here that, misunderstandings. I mean, if Mr. Mulder expressed an opinion that he interpreted something one way, Director Ford a different way. I'm just troubled by the potential reasons for removing someone with just, with no cause whatsoever. That really bothers me. As far as the public goes, that process is setting a real bad precedent. As far as any political position, there should be a cause. If you're gonna be removed from a position in a state senate or something, they have to have a trial and it has to be caused. So thank you for the opportunity to express my opinions on this.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Do we have anyone else on Zoom who would like to comment? Did that come through, sort of?
Any additional public speakers, please raise your hands on Zoom.
So it's not just me, okay. Well, there are no other hands raised. Seeing none, I am going to close public comments and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner McCavver.
Right, so my last comment was in regard to the removal. So it would seem more consistent to have it be the same for all commissioners, can be removed with cause by a four-fifths vote. There doesn't seem to be a justification to have different rules for at-large commissioners when it comes to removal.
I see Commissioner Newman had his hand up. I'll go to you and then the director.
I would just say to that, that the at-large commissioners are appointed by majority so they could be removed by majority instead of it having to go to a four-fifths vote. Because the appointed commissioners are appointed by that one supervisor and that's why the higher standard. I understand what our caller from the public said about the for cause or by no cause. I kinda was wondering about that as well, but I will defer to the supervisors as to what they had put on their language here, which is not for cause. But I do agree that it could become a political football at some point if it's not for cause on removal. But that a member of the commission can be moved, removed without cause at any time by that appointing supervisor, that's, that's just what it's been.
Right.
And you're always just serving at the discretion of that appointing supervisor. Whereas the at-large are with the majority of the board. That's my logic on that whole thing for how it's written right now.
Director, did you want to speak up here?
I do, thank you. And I would like to say that Commissioner Newman understands that pretty well. I mean, the big change here is that this, these changes allow the board to overrule a supervisor who has appointed a commissioner. And so that is why it's a four-fifths vote. The element there was to try to make it a very, a higher bar. Whereas at-large or appointed by a majority, removed by a majority, that's consistent. And the concern is as if removal of a appointed commissioner were just a political act, then, you know, just a simple majority could make that a lower bar. And in order to ensure that it was something that was truly important and a reason for removal, the four-fifths vote is what was settled on. I think it's important to discuss that without cause, I want to talk about two things here. One is this is a typical term of art in appointing and removing commissioners in any ordinance, and it's not being proposed to be changed here. And the reason that you don't identify cause is because then you've got to establish the standards for which they can be removed. And it's nearly impossible to dream up every single circumstance that there may be to remove an individual from an appointed position. And that's why nearly all ordinances say without cause.
So both are without cause, then?
Correct.
Okay. That makes more, that's a little bit more consistent, thank you. And then I had another question that's just more, again, about the supporting arguments that are not here and perhaps they do exist. So I guess if you're saying that both are without cause, then we don't need to address cause in the sense that I was presuming that it was in reference to breaking the code of conduct. And I was wondering if indeed that was the argument, well, it's missing here. And two, would that be one breach of the code of conduct or two or three? And what were the rules that went into that?
Well, that is why that's not referenced. Is, you know, is one minor breach a reason for removal? Somebody had a bad night, so we're gonna remove them? That's why it's left that it would then be an action of the board with a certain criteria, either for, you know, a majority or a supermajority.
Okay, thank you. I think, didn't it say though, with cause in the language?
In the, in the rules, the procedures that we went over last meeting?
In this one too, I thought I read that it, at one point it did say remove with cause.
You mean in the, in the earlier ordinance that we're revising? Or, I'm not sure where you're referring to.
Yeah, I thought I saw that somewhere, but if indeed it does say without cause in the case of both at-large and appointed, then that would be consistent?
If they were having a discussion about removing you and trying to convince four-fifths of the people to remove you, it seems like cause would come up in that discussion at that point.
Well, through the chair, I think that would be the point that in order to get four votes out of five, there would have to be a pretty good reason.
But if I may, Director, just to, then I'll get to you, Commissioner Mulder, but just to follow up on your earlier clarification, which I believe I understand, you're saying that if it were to state for cause, that would require either the ordinance or some referenced other document or policy to enumerate what the permissible causes could be for removal and have to make a showing that this particular commissioner violated one of these causes. And as you said, it would be hard for that to be comprehensive of every possible scenario. So without, right. But as you say, in order to get four votes out of five, there would have to be a discussion of what four of those people thought was the justification. So I wanted, Commissioner Mulder had his hand up, so.
So in regards to 1.3.7, in listening to the director and Commissioner Newman talking back and forth, I was mistaken with the way I spoke earlier and there was the difference. I do remember that difference of the three votes to four votes and that discussion helped spark that memory. So as I said before, I can be wrong often. And all this, a little entertaining, I mean, I guess I have short hair, so. You know, I haven't had long hair since about third grade and one time during COVID, it happened and it freaks my daughter out if I grow long hair, so.
Okay.
Just trying to have some humor here.
Yeah, no. Yeah, I was, I was.
I guess I thought that from the last thing that we received, it was going to be something like removal with cause, the cause being a breach of the code of conduct. That seemed to be what the last report we received was getting at.
Just for my clarification, are you referring to what was said during the board of supervisors discussion item? Or are you referring to what we reviewed last meeting, the policy?
Yes, what we reviewed last meeting.
Well, there was a lot in that document. And on that document, just to remind ourselves, we are going to have it come back to us for the purpose of, because we identified a few places where it was unclear, ambiguous, possibly missing something that we wanted to recommend. It's not, it would not be in our power to directly amend it, but we would send that back with those suggested edits or additions for the board of supervisors to amend, correct?
That is the plan, that we'll bring that back at the next meeting, yes.
But, I mean, it's a good question that Commissioner McCavver raises. Did that document, which I have here, but it's 12 pages, so I don't know that I could look through it, does it say anything within that document that you recall about these guidelines shall be the basis for removal if violated or anything like that?
I don't recall anything that that is that strong. I would also say that, you know, there's a slight difference. Well, I'm understating this. There is a significant difference between a policy document and an ordinance.
Correct.
I have something too.
Yes, Commissioner O'Neill.
When you were appointed, or the at-large people were appointed, were they appointed for four years?
Yes.
So to me, I don't think they should be, retroactively be reduced to two years. I think they should be able to run their four-year and then after that, then they get reappointed for two years and that could be a compromise because it's like you're retroactively taking something away that they were already appointed for. That's just my thoughts. It seems like they compromised, like they were talking about removing two and then, okay, well, let's just compromise and cut them in half. But that should be in the future, not, in my opinion, retroactively take away something you already approved for because you have new supervisors now, not the ones that were there when they appointed you for four. Is that thought?
Commissioner Mulder.
So I hear all this and then it's reminding me. We serve at the pleasure of the board of supervisors. This is the rules that they deliberated over and I think their, it's really coming before us as a zoning ordinance so that way we can prove it. I don't really feel it's our call, we haven't been voted in by thousands of voters. That's just my personal opinion. And I'm good with it the way it is because after sitting here, listening to the deliberations, yes, it'd be good to have this or that or any of those kind of things. But also, we have to remember, we serve at the pleasure of the board of supervisors.
If I can just speak directly to Commissioner O'Neill's point, I hear what you're saying. But it is my recollection for the reason for that particular point is that, well, we've already discussed what the logic was. Director Ford has tried to discuss what the logic was for shortening the terms from four years to two years. The reason why they then had to make one of them, Commissioner Mitchell's, shorter than four but make it three was simply so that they could have them be staggered. In the past, they've been staggered two years here, two years there, between the four-year at-large terms. One of them, Commissioner McCavver's, is about to end. The other one would go for another two years, but if they let it go two years, then they would be staggered. So that's why they changed his to be a three-year term.
And I agree with what you're saying. We're not elected officials, but that's why I'm curious why we're even being asked. I mean, if it's just to prove what they've already approved, why do we approve it at all? I don't have a problem with going along with whatever the board of supervisors adopts. They are elected officials, we're appointed. But that's where I was confused in the very beginning is why are we adopting this? It should be adopted, I think, at their level.
So, thank you for that question. I'm sorry I didn't make that clear to begin with. This is a portion of the zoning ordinance. And in order to amend the zoning ordinance, the planning commission is required by law to make a recommendation.
Right, so just like it would be any other land use-based part of the zoning ordinance where we would be required to review what the staff has drafted, say this looks good to us, but we will recommend to the board that they actually approve it. Yes, so Commissioner McCavver, yes, please.
Thank you. Well, I really appreciate Commissioner Newman adding the rationale that I hadn't considered behind the difference between the two-year versus the four-year, that being that there are, you know, two to three supervisors that change every two years, right? So I can understand that that could be an argument for having the at-large positions come up every two years because the supervisor board does change every two years. And I feel like that should be there because it is a strong argument and because there are just no arguments in this at all. And I can agree with that argument, and so thank you for that. And I guess I still don't really agree with removal without cause being different for the at-large versus the appointed commissioners, if that's the case.
It's not the case.
So it's four-fifths for both?
No, it's, any can be removed without cause. No, it's, it's, any can be removed without cause. But the mechanism for removal is, if it's, if it's an individual appointed, they can be removed for no cause by their appointing supervisor at any time, or by a four-fifths vote of the full board at any time without cause. For the at-large, because they're appointed by three fifths, they can be removed by three fifths at any time without cause. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right. Okay. Well, I, I don't really see the value in that. I don't think that that's really consistent. I would still like to see, and I know we don't really have a say in it, but I would still like to see there more consistency for, for that particular aspect of it.
Okay. Just, just to be real clear, to recap where we were there with the ordinance that Director Ford had up. At this point, we're considering the ordinance as, as put before us, but with the minor edit to clarifying language on.
All right, where is that? 1.3 dot 2 dot 2, the term set to expire.
Okay. That's where things stand.
So with that minor edit, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 22 dash, it doesn't have a number, find the project exempt from further environmental review pursuant to Section 15061B, three of the state sequel guidelines, make the required findings for adoption of the ordinance, and recommend the Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance.
I'll second that. And I think you have to go up to the very top where the file number is. So it's, it's 22 dash 1547.
Oh.
That's how you do that.
Wow, Mike, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'll, I'll take that amendment with the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we call for it? Okay, then, Mr. Tripp?
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McHaver?
I'm going to vote yes, but I would also like to make a note that I would like to see more of the arguments supporting it, go into it, if that's the supervisor's pleasure.
Sure. Tom, excuse me, Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you guys for that discussion. Thanks for the questions, and thanks for the, for clarifying some of the basis for this, Director. Before we adjourn, we do have an item, Item H, Planning Commission Discussion Items. Anyone have any things you wanted to bring up for discussion or suggest for a future agenda item?
Did the director adequately address the caps in the initiative? Are we going to have a presentation on that?
Good question. Commissioner Mulder?
I have a hard time requesting agenda items with knowing the workload and knowing that it'll be quite some time before that cap issue comes to fruition, hearing the numbers. I, so I would think maybe six months down the road, I'd be fine, just having a discussion somewhere around there. But.
Is there, through the chair?
Yes.
Is there perception out there? If there is a perception, I think it needs to be dealt with sooner rather than later, just to get the public on board and informed. So I, I would say, you know, try to, within the next 30 to 60 days, to put that to bed.
Yes, you are correct.
Commissioner McHaver?
Through the chair, I believe last time the director informed us that the workload has lessened. I believe he said that they had a lot of time relatively.
And, and if I can just say, I, I appreciate Commissioner Newman, what you said, because while it may be that the discussion that, that we heard based on the director and county council, and looking at the ordinances, might settle and clarify the issue, but that was not an agendized item that people of, who are interested in this question would have seen on our agenda. It just happened to come up in the course of discussing other items. So with sensitivity to workload, I, I would agree that it might be good to have something, hopefully could be a fairly simple item, coming up in a future meeting.
So we could bring a report back identifying what the language is, what many people's understanding of the intent were, and options for reconciling that from do nothing to modify the ordinance.
I guess I'm missing something. So, I don't know if this is a trend, but what is the real issue here? I mean, people want to know how many permits have been issued and how many are left. And if that's the case, isn't that just a status report that's attached?
Yeah, we can give you a simple status report, that's easy.
I mean, that could be a cover sheet to all of them, so that when we go forward, if we're looking at it and says, oh, there's 500 allowed, and we've only approved 200, and we need to know that when we're approving.
Well, we, we do that as part of every resolution right now.
So I don't really understand what the issue is.
The, the issue is relative to the projects that are over three acres in area.
Oh, okay.
And, and I think that there was a strong understanding, frankly even by me, that that was a cumulative cap.
Across both ordinances?
Across both, both ordinances, right.
We already discussed that. I thought this was a different issue that we were talking about.
No, I think it was raised whether or not we need to bring it back.
Commissioner Mulder?
Just a request to bring it back, so that way we can ask the questions. And then if there was any, I mean, we have to ask the Board of Supervisors if we can do anything anyways. It doesn't matter what any of us feel, we have to get permission if we even wanted to go after changing anything.
Right. Yeah. But it would, basically, it just would be a chance to have an agendized item that raises a question, there's some confusion about this, here's the answer, clarifying that, hopefully, then leaves us with options if, if we do think it, we should recommend to the board that they make a change to that, we could do that. Commissioner Newman?
And through the chair, by doing that, it brings it out to the public.
Yep.
Which is what we've been hearing, and allows them to weigh in on that as well. So it's a full discussion. We'll see where it goes. Either it doesn't go anywhere, or it stays, or it changes.
So I was, I was already, already understanding that we were going to do that, but what you're saying is we have to formally do it on, at this point in the agenda to give you that directive.
Yes.
Because I thought it was a whole new subject we were talking about, because we'd already decided that other one.
No, no, no.
I get it.
Okay.
Disefficiently given.
Okay, okay.
That's it.
Okay.
I'm good, I think.
Great suggestion to get that, get that in a, request that that be addressed in a future agenda. Anything else? Any other questions or comments?
I wanted to clarify, just the large cultivation is what I'm asking for. I'm not really asking for, honestly, a report on the, the initiative and stuff like that. I don't really think that's our purview, that's my personal opinion. So I'm not, that is not included in my ask. I think there's a great three-hour, maybe four-hour video on Legis使if anyone's interested in that one.
Totally right. No, we, we are not going to be debating the ordinance that we have no say over. I mean, the, the initiative that I should say that we have no say over, anyway. But Director, are you, are you clear on the simple nature of this?
Equremly.
Okay. Okay. And just looking ahead to the future items, since it was discussed at the end of last meeting, I believe at Commissioner Banjo's request, he was, we were going to have a, a report from you, is that on the December 1st item, at the December 1st meeting, on essentially the, the subject of consultation with tribes and other agencies and stakeholders?
That is correct. We're going to bring back a report talking about what the process is, how it fits into the referral, how things fit into the referral process, and then how that all gets incorporated into recommendations that you receive.
Okay.
And in that, you would also include if it's a law that you're complying with, because in some cases, those notifications are required by state law, aren't they not?
Correct. And we will make it clear that sometimes, thank you for bringing that up, because actually, Mr. Johnson and I just had one of these discussions today. We send things out for referral, we get comments back during the referral period. And then relative to tribal cultural resources prior to circulating an initial study, we send out a request or offer for consultation for tribal cultural resources under SEQA. And sometimes we get different comments back. And so we're struggling with one of those right now.
Because some things are just outside of our control, so it's not like your policy that you're following. You also follow the law that's outside of our.
Yeah. Right, we're, that's mandated. We, we get to do that.
And I don't know that everyone always understands that. So.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, great.
If there's nothing else, then we will adjourn this meeting.
Before you adjourn, because I just kind of put you on notice, the December 1st meeting is large.
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 Okay.
And we canceled the 15th meeting.
We did.
Okay. So I'm just going to leave it there.
Okay. I mean, we, we certainly, I know Commissioner Mitchell was the one who wanted to know if we were canceling the 15th, but would it be your recommendation that we schedule a second meeting in December?
It would give you the ability, if you don't finish things on the 1st, to continue things to the 15th, rather than to after the 1st of the year.
Okay.
You, you can make that decision. Well, it'd help us, we may have some things to notice before the meeting of the 1st.
Right.
And our noticing needs to be done before then. So if the commission's inclined to have that meeting, we can notice for that. But as of now, we are not planning to notice anything new.
Understood. What do you guys think?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, Commissioner Mulder.
Through the chair, to staff, we can still meet via Zoom, is that correct or incorrect?
As of right now, we can. Things will change after February?
I think it's February, as far as I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. I can be here 100%, either virtually or in person then.
Okay.
I'm okay with having one back on the schedule. It's only been two weeks since we've had one.
Right. I didn't, I didn't plan any exotic vacations for that date. And, and I do think it would be better than pushing more things back to a future meeting. So, because it's inconvenient to applicants and everyone when things on the agenda don't, don't get covered. So, okay.
I'm okay with it, too, going back on.
And if we have the option of doing it by Zoom, if the weather's not good or whatever, then, you know, for people to travel.
Okay.
So that's an official request to have December 15th back on the calendar?
I believe it is.
Yes.
Great.
Okay.
Well, it'll be, it'll be noticed, so that means some things will be noticed for that date instead of the 1st, is that my understanding?
Yes. Well, no, everything that's noticed for the 1st is already noticed for the 1st, and it's, it's coming.
Yeah.
But I think there's nine cannabis projects that are already noticed there, and.
Okay. So at least we have another meeting within, before the end of the year to get this bill over, essentially.
Right.
Since we're talking about this, do, do you know if it will be December 1st or a later meeting that the Planning Commission rules and code of conduct will come back?
I was planning on bringing them back on the 1st, because we weren't having a meeting on the 15th.
Uh huh.
And, but I'll put them on the 1st, I'll put a, or I'll put a couple of things on the 1st, including the rules. And if we don't get to them, then we'll be able to do it on the 15th.
Right.
Is there a deadline for complying with all the training that was in the?
I do not believe there is, other than it's got to be done either annually or ever, some are annually, some are every other year.
Okay.
That's my recollection.
Okay. Anything else from staff or commission before we adjourn?
No.
All right, guys, then we will consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.